This shit on camera. Let's get it on camera, not today bitch. 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 Let's get it on cam. Fucking hitman. Trying to drop the hitman off to the work, cuz I seen y'all coming in the DWP fucking vehicles this morning off the highway. Over here hired for murder. Hired for murder, right? Yeah, the motherfucking sheriff office, the motherfucking city councils, the mayors down here. Trying then hire for murder for my motherfucking life. Yeah. The, the grocery store owner, the motherfucking gas store owner, which is the same owner been owning this shit for forty years. It said it's been thirty-eight, but you might as well round it off the forty cuz when forty hit, bitch, you ain't gonna have no business no more bitch. Yeah, bitch, and that's on my mind. The fuck? Good morning, Grand Rising. It's me Pearl. Good morning, Grand Rising. Y'all. The bitch, I'm telling you, yesterday they had this bitch kept passing by me, right? Yeah, in this white, uh, white vehicle with Texas license plate. Bitch kept mugging me, right? I say, okay, so the, the, the first time, I just like, okay, you know, the bitch might be a little, you know, gone or whatever. Okay, the second time the bitch did it, I looked at the bitch. The third time, I went after the bitch. The fourth time, oh lord, baby, oh baby, oh baby, it just was horrible, just horrible bitch. They tell me that's bit old lady. Bitch, I don't even know you hoe. The fuck is you mugging me cuz they paid you bitch? They paid you to do that shit. Yeah, they paid you, and all you other motherfuckers that they paying. Let's get the hitman on motherfucking cam. Bitch, I see you over there? In the work truck? Bitch, I see you. Hey? 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 Yeah. You wanna shoot somebody bitch? Yeah, already got your vehicle. Thank you. Yeah. Now get back in that bitch and gone bout your motherfucking business hoe. Yeah. Since you wanna shoot somebody huh? You wanna shoot somebody huh? Yeah, you wanna shoot somebody? Stupid motherfuckers. And this stupid bitch, he a part of it too. Worked for the city council huh? You worked for the town huh? That's who done set this hit on my motherfucking life. This motherfucking town of Malone, Livonia, Port Allen, the sheriff office, the motherfucking mayors that work here. Bitch, nah. So you have my land. Bitch, you out your motherfucking mind? You better get that shit and pack that shit up, hitman. Fucking hitman. Ain't no motherfucking body bout to kill me in this bitch. I'm tired of fucking saying this shit. Fuck, stupid. Fucking WP. Bought the trucks, yeah, just like them RVs y'all bought to get here from motherfucking Washington bitch, and now you stuck. Now you got that bitch for rent. Yeah, man, come on with that bullshit. Look at the ancestors, it's okay.
Good morning ancestors. Good morning Grand Rising. Good morning. Grand Rising. Grand Rising. Yes, I do. I love you. I love you. I love you ancestors. Thank you God. Thank you for you, thank you for me lord. Thank you for mercy and thank you for grace. Thank you for the journey. And never giving up on me, never letting me give up on myself. Thank you God. I love you so very much. Holy Father. Thank you brother Jesus. Thank you Ebony. Mommy love you so much. Thank you. Killed my baby with black magic. She'll be twenty-five. That bitch told. And my daughter was last night making sure she didn't OD. That's funny how that work huh? That's funny. That funny. Ancestors. I got food. I do got food. I got food. Be scared.
Get in the car, get in the car. Get in the car. Okay, 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 okay spirit, okay. I got it, I got it. Get in the car bitch. Do you know you got a hit on your head? Yes, okay, well act like it, alright spirit? Okay, spirit say act like you got a hit on your head, don't be all willy-nilly, right? Like they won't shoot your ass, yes the fuck they will. These are motherfucking hitmen, these are mobsters, these are city officials, these are the officials. You think they won't kill you, they done killed so many before. To stay on your land. In our land. Will they not kill you? Yes, they will. They will. They really, really will. Thank you guys for being here, let's read the energy. Good morning, Grand Rising. Peace, love and blessings to everybody. Wakey, wakey, come on with me Miss Pearl to the upper room. It's bacon. Egg and biscuit. It's cheese on it, but I didn't want no cheese. But they put it on there anyway. Look at this shit, I'm just gonna read what I got up here, the card's in the back, but I'mma read what's up here. Monday, something about somebody could've facetimed you on Monday? From a two-two-five? Something to do with a K-pop or something? I don't know, but spirit is blowing the trumpet. We have setup gone bad. We have filed for divorces over, so you could've filed for a divorce, or somebody filed for a divorce from you? And then they went and put a hit on your head. Uh, and maybe it's not even that serious, right? Look at the hitman bitch, get the fuck. Bitch. Gonna come again. Gonna come again, bitch, go back to Texas. Gonna send the hitman again. Again, go do some fake work. Go do some fake. Go do some fake work, hitman. Yeah. Yeah, the vehicle, that Volvo, that was hired by the motherfucker that hired the hitman. All these vehicles was motherfucking, look at this shit. Shoot who bitch, not me. Yep, yep, blow the signal. Yeah, you being recorded bitch. All y'all being recorded. Yeah, you being recorded, yeah, the hitman. And then this was crazy, they ain't just hired no one hitman. These motherfuckers got together and put they motherfucking money together bitch. I didn't even know that I was a part of mobsters. Um, the city councils are mobsters man. They mobsters. I didn't even know that I was a part of this shit. My family mobsters. They are the judges, the police, the lawyers, the doctors. It is my family. The fuck? You think spirit, this what spirit saying? You think that these people then murdered all these people? Then stole all these inheritance, all this land? You think that these people trying to go down without a fight? That's what spirit is saying, one-one-one, thank you holy spirit. No, they not. They not trying to go down without a fight because then that would mean that they gotta give all that shit back. Years and years and years. Years and years of stolen inheritance. Stolen land, stolen money, stolen every motherfucking thing. They gotta give it back. Yeah, they gotta get that shit back. And they feel like shit, no. Gotta get rid of all the divine beings. Or you got the message from God, we gotta get rid of you. Uh-uh, cuz you gonna tell what the fuck we been doing. And we can't have you tell what the fuck we been doing, right? No, cuz then you gonna get us caught like this hitman over here. Right there. Right there. Nah, he ain't working, it's fake. It's fake work. Fake work, that's a hitman. Hired by the sheriff office, the store owner Nick Akidrapal, that, that, that Nick dick sucker. Anyway. That's who hired these people, the sheriff. They hired these hitmen for me. They all got together and grouped they money up. Yes, they did. They all, the, the, the mobsters. They all got together and put they money together. Because they real thieves. That's who run this world, the mob. Ain't no president run the world. The mob run this bitch. No fucking lies. Mm-hmm, that's who run it. They coming up the road, I him. Behind me, I him. I told you I heard him spirit. Hitman. 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 That's a spray hitman. That man over there, that's a hitman too. That's doing that fake ass sweeping. That's a hitman too. They dress them up, and that man over there, that's a hitman too. That man over there, that's a hitman too. Man. Let's do a message. Good morning. I took all my nails off. That's the only one spirit won't let me get off. Fourteen fourteen on the phone. Let's do this spirit. Let me share this live too. I'm sharing live on Facebook. Yeah. So, let's see. Because I got these last night. Somebody like to play. Spirit say they like to play. And they here. Cuz the dad. Oh, Mike and Nolan daddy put a hit on my head this morning in Livonia. And I seen his daddy. We was at the same store. And I just did a reading saying that Mike and Nolan was in the motherfucking, uh, James Joy, my neighbor, with the gun in the bathroom, trying to shoot me, right? And then his daddy pulled up to the store this morning. Paid this white man. The dad did it, his dad. And I seen him. I seen that dog too. And I seen them pick up the dog. Look and see. It's a boy dog? It's his dog? It's his dog? Yeah. They here. They feel like this a game, your life is a joke. They here to play. Which means that, yes, you got a hitman on your head. You got a hitman on your head? Yeah. You do. Yeah, you do. Trying to get this job done. It means necessary. And it means necessary. That's so fucked up. And that stupid bitch gonna tell me? A poor bitch that I didn't feed? That I didn't help? Right? Gonna tell this nigga, a whole mobster? I'm gonna take your charge? You poor? Why would you? I don't get it. They love being slaves. They love being slaves y'all. Yeah, that's what I seen. That man paying for a hitman, he paid a white man. The dad. Told him that I seen him. That's how they gonna know me, that's how they gonna find me cuz I seen him. I seen him. Let's see spirit. Because spirit is saying, it's a fuckboy out here. The dad is a fuckboy, and they boy is a fuckboy too. Hold on yeah. We got be lawyer, or you be lawyer to me, or you gonna lose me? And they say, uh, and they say it takes time to get where you, where you say it take time to get where you, where you are, and but, but then you be fooling me? So you could've told these people, you better be lawyer to me, uh, I'mma get the fuck on out of Dodge. Well. Maybe these people thought you wasn't ever gonna go no motherfucking way. Maybe they thought that, you just said that shit, you didn't mean that shit. Yeah, it says, lost, I got God, I know he'll be here. Same as I used to be, got tired of people using me. So you the same as you used to be? These people thought you was lost, then you could've told them, no, I got God. And they thought, they was like, who? It was like, I got God. And they was like, who? Like they didn't know who the fuck God was bitch, and you bout to find out. Who the fuck God is bitch? When I told that bitch that witch that, I told that bitch, I say, bitch, I got God. You know that witch told me who? I say God, she say who? I say God. She say who? Four times that bitch said that. When I said it, the fourth time, she was like, oh, God? Like bitch, is something wrong with you? Bitch, is you okay? You don't know who the fuck God is? Your creator? What the fuck? That magic got you that goat? You a whole sweetheart. Divine beings. It got he, she, his gay undercover go both ways. And they have addictions. We have new home moving into. They could've got their home for betraying you. Something that's about to be on live TV. About your abundance, earth angel? Save your money. When you get this money, save it, that's what spirit is saying. When you get your money, earth angel, and you bout to get it. Cuz it's about to be on live TV. You about to be on live TV. I was on channel nine the other day y'all. Sure was. I keep saying, motherfucker, you don't be scared of the one that can kill the body. Don't be scared to die. Why would you be scared to die? Why? Only reason why you'll be scared to die is if you scared to meet God. When you should've already met him before you died? Just saying. That beauty magic ain't working, spirit say. Nice try though. That bitch say who? Who? God damn bitch, don't even know who God is man. It says Jesus died for us, Father, Son and the Holy Spirit. We are one. No matter what they say, we are one. No matter what they say, we are one. We have the railroad this year. Cuz that's who Sherman worked for, the railroad. Look at the sheriff bitch, you going to prison, don't speak to me. Don't even speak to me. Trying to set my life up for murder. Yeah, I'm finna put your ass on camera bitch. Y'all thought it was fun and shit to play with my life? It was fun to hire people to chase me like a dog, right? Yeah, that was fun. It was so fun, wouldn't even got the little niggas working. Sad. Yeah. You could go and get a refund. Cuz I ain't dead. Sad. Wanna be the next Oprah. Really bitch? By betraying your own people? And you ain't even black bitch, you Indian. Just so you know it. All you motherfuckers, they keep lying to y'all, telling y'all come from motherfucking African booty scratches, no the fuck you don't. Bitch, some of y'all did cuz your daddies came over here and raped our people just like the motherfucking white men did. I'm just saying. Bitch, the Africans, they brought the white people here. To the Indians, the real natives. The medicine men, the medicine women. You bitches then took our land by using our own people. And my grandma told me, this is our land. I'm full-blooded Cherokee and German nigga, ain't no motherfucking way. Ain't no way. And both of my grandfathers is right, don't play with me. Bitch, anyway, told me before a white man ever stepped foot on this motherfucking land, you hear me? They already had Africans over here mating and shit with them on ships from Africa. So what that tell you? You motherfuckers ain't no motherfucking Africans, you fucking native Indians. This your fucking land, and you don't even fucking know it. But you'll suck the devil's dick, right? Just to be a slave in your own fucking land. You gonna be Oprah of the prison system. All you motherfuckers being repulsed. I don't trust a bitch of they men in this place, all your motherfucking children, cuz they right and wanna kill all the motherfuckers that do right? Bitch, all y'all motherfucking mind, y'all wanted just to be evil motherfuckers? What if God grant y'all that, then what y'all gonna do? You want a world full of evil motherfuckers? I pray that God grant, I, I pray that God take us all from y'all evil bitches so y'all can all be in y'all cesspool of fucking evil together. I sure pray it happen. Let God separate us, cuz you motherfuckers weak. Fucking money is your fucking guide. Cuz you chosen. And you precious, you a precious gem. And this is what they been doing to us, ripping us all the fuck apart. It say Bill wants their life back. Like mother, like daughter, so your mother met a warlock, right? Yeah, your mother met a warlock. Where she was off, dipping off or whatever. Yeah, she could've met this person out in the world. And the same warlock took your mother's birthright, right? Took her powers and shit, used it against, so made her a slave, made him his slave, right? That's what happen when bitches don't put theyself first. Cuz if a bitch don't put herself first, she gonna put something first. I ain't even finna put my motherfucking kids before me. No. Because I know fucking well, if I ain't doing good, how the fuck I'mma take care of the kids? Fuckin' bitch. Any fucking way. Like I said. So this Bill person is a practitioner, right? And in my case, Bill is the practitioner up in Montgomery, Alabama. That's Mobile, just like the judge that signed over my inheritance, originally from Mobile, Alabama? Yeah, that's the judge that's on the case, and Bill is her practitioner. He a city council up in Mobile, Alabama. Yeah, he live in a house, uh, uh, that got pink flowers? And, 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 and red flowers, white I think too, roses, I mean roses. He a practitioner. Him and his son Louis, which is the undertaker up in Montgomery, right? He take the bodies. And the daddy Bill, which is practitioners, right, they slaves still. Right, they felt like they could come in, if they get with the white man? Then they wouldn't have to be no slave, which mean if they turn they own people in? If they sacrifice they own people? They'll get a part, they, they can get a status like the white man. But you don't know that the white man got the status because you bitches had slaves first. And what goes around comes around, thank you God. Hitman. Hitman. The sheriff just blew at the hitman, man, let me get y'all bitches. That's the hitman the sheriff just blew at. That black sheriff woman, driving that motherfucking van. Bitch, just motherfucking blew at this fuckman. Ain't no fucking work over here to be done. Ain't no fucking work over here to be done. Yeah. Bitch, you going to prison. You straight going to prison. They riding around in the hearse too. Look at him y'all. Go and get in there and do your fake work. Cuz bitch, you ain't doing no real work. They got the hearse out again y'all. They got the hearse out again. Got you bitch. Keep hiring hitman after hitman after hitman. Look at the police. Look, 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 look. Look, look. You know you just hired that hitman, right? Yeah, what you looking back for? Yeah, I got you four-six-two. Sure do. Hiring hits on people's lives than you supposed to protect and serve? Ain't protecting that motherfucking thing, serving your fucking self. Yeah. I guess the mobsters called y'all, right? Yeah. Yeah. The mobsters called you, right? Cuz you wanna do me like you did J, right? Yeah, you wanna do me like you did J? Kill him, cuz he was an acting mini community leader, right? Yeah. Thought you was gonna straight pull up on me, right? Like I wasn't gonna get them hitmen, y'all hired the hitman for my life. And Nick, or the store owner, you did too. Yeah, look at Jessica mama. See him, can't even drive a motherfucker for real. Fake ass work you hitman. Fake ass work. Fake ass work. Hired by the motherfucking police sheriff office of Ippreville Parish, Puncapie Parish. These people put a hit on my life. They hired all of these fake ass workers. Ain't no work need to be done down here. Ain't no work. See? See, what you stupid motherfuckers don't know, right? You can go in and erase that footage all you want, bitch. But you see them poles, son? See him? You see them poles? They have cameras. You remember the other night when y'all put that poison in the parking lot next to my car? You remember that? And then the whole lights shut down? In the whole place? The feds did that. You know why the feds did that? Cause you motherfuckers was really trying to kill me for real. And that bitch with that red hair at the store, you fucking white bitch, you. Yeah, I just seen you pass by, bitch. Y'all really keep playing with my life down here, right? But you bitches ain't about to kill me and my own land, you gonna get out of my motherfucking land, bitch, before I do. What you trying to do? Oh, yeah, let me finish talking about yesterday. So the bitch with the Texas license plates kept passing me by, red bitch mugging me, I ain't never seen this bitch a day in my life. Like Nick didn't hire her and everybody else. You hear me? Yeah, she was with a key Japal. So, the bi- the bitch passed by the, the third time, right, the third time, I went after the bitch, she kept going, so I stopped. The fourth time this bitch did this shit, I really went after the hoe. Yeah, and really went after her. And I ain't never seen this bitch a day in my life. She out there with a key Japal, no shoes on, bald headed, looking like scatty wax, right? Fucking no ass, big ass titties, just look like a Oompa Loompa. Any fucking way, they hard down really wanna fight me. How, bitch, I don't even know you. What the fuck? Some weird ass shit. And how the fuck is you bitches on my motherfucking page, bitch? I ain't tell nobody, I read terror. So how the fuck you bitches get here, a key Japal? Brought all you bitches- Yeah, I'ma y'all gonna- Thank you. Hitman creeping down the street. You see that truck over there? Yeah. They also place empty vehicles around this bitch too. Docked out windows, so that way you wouldn't know nobody sitting in them, right? With a gun. You wouldn't know that shit, right? No, you wouldn't know that. Mm-mm. Yeah, come on, so I get you on camera, little buddy. Come on. Come on. Go on, white boy. I got your fucking picture for later on, cause I'm pretty sure. Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Oh, yeah, I heard that man telling, telling y'all yesterday in the parking lot. Man, do you not see? If we shoot her, it's gonna be on the camera. And they telling him, nah, man, we can get rid of that evidence on the camera. Man, just do it, just do it. Just kill him. We can get rid of the evidence on the camera. What the fuck? Jesus. I did, I was so unaware that my family is hitmen and women. I didn't know that my family was in the mob. I never knew this until now. I never knew this. They in the whole mob. What the fuck? What the fuck? These policemen work for the mob. Everybody work for the mob. Jesus Christ. This is fucking crazy. Let's read. Anyway, Bill, back to Bill. From Mobile, Alabama, living in Montgomery, Alabama. So your mother met this practitioner. Maybe when she was out in the world. So this person thought that you was gonna be like your mother, weak minded. Because they stole your mother, uh, birthright, right? Your mother couldn't even sacrifice you to this warlock. They could've sacrificed you to this warlock. Oh, the sheriff woman, the rule of evil, bitch. One, you the man, you the one set all this shit up, bitch. You, you the one set it all up. You. You. That was your dog. We gonna, we gonna get this on camera. Cause I be fucking these motherfucking sheriff councilmen, mayors kill me in Mangwin, LaFonia. Lafayette here too? Oh, she brought a baby. Oh, it don't matter, you ain't about to have that baby for long. You ain't even about to have that baby for long, you evil bitch, you setting murder for people's lives. That baby was in that car? The whole time? What the fuck? Where that baby come from? You left that baby in that car? Oh my God, bitch, you crazy. You crazy. You just left that baby in that car? Oh my God. Y'all, she left that baby in that car, she did not have that baby. She left that baby, she just opened- Man, that's crazy. Oh my God, bitch, you crazy. That car been sitting there the whole time with the baby in it? Oh my God. This bitch crazy. This bitch crazy. You don't leave your baby in the car? By itself. By itself. You really crazy. You really crazy. Something wrong with you? Why, wh- what if the baby would've birthed up in the car, stupid bitch? You stupid. I don't care you want people to see your baby. Going to prison, girl. You setting up murders on people. How the fuck you leave a baby in the car? That's what I'm trying to figure out, how you leave that baby in the car, you did not just have that baby. Y'all, she left that baby in the car alone. They watching me. And that's why she showing the baby, I swear on God, she left that baby in that car. She want the camera to see the baby, cause the other police- Yeah, I'm telling, bitch, I'm telling. Y'all wanted me to just lay down so y'all could take my fucking life, bitch, and you lie. How the fuck the sheriff office woman leave her baby in the car alone? How you do that? How you leave the baby in the car alone? A little bitty baby too. A little bitty baby. You don't need that baby. You sure don't need that baby. Planning hits for people's lives. Sad. Sad. Here come the handicapped fucking police officer. He wanna do the files. Hide the evidence and shit. That's him. And him too. On fucking body. You ain't protecting and serving but your fucking selves. Evil motherfuckers. The one go erase all the footage. There's some evil shit a fire- Evil shit, that man in that, that yellow dump truck is a hitman too. Look at this evil bitch. Left that baby in that car while she was all in the police station, y'all. This the other evil bitch coming back. Left that baby in that car by- I can't believe, and that woman- Not that woman, so she was in there the whole time, y'all- Baby in this car. From the whole time I was sitting out here, I- That they left that baby in that car. The whole time the black bitch pulled up in that car and pu- and got in the truck and pulled off, that's just how long baby was in that car by herself. Swear on God. The black woman pulled up in that fucking jeep, not that white woman. And got her in that fucking truck. She walked here. Black woman walked here. So when did you pulled up? It is her car. Yeah, but why was you inside the police station with baby in the car? Cause I didn't see you with no baby when you walked out of there. Sure didn't see you with no baby. So you left that baby in there? And look at him, finna go erase the motherfucking footage off the files, off the cameras. Already handicapped and still defiling God. I have just exposed mobsters, sheriffs, lawyers, doctors, judges, DAs. Hitman. Hitman, you see the hitman? That's a hitman in a work truck. See him? See him? Got him on camera? Got all y'all on camera? Thank you, God. Thank you, God. They paid to shoot and kill. That's what they paid to do. By the mayor, the sheriff, the city council, the judge, my family. They all involved in this. Why he ain't never move yet? Why he ain't move? They told him to wait. They told him to wait. The hitman. Yeah, now they told him to drive, drive off. Drive off. Go file him, so y'all can have a meeting. Yeah, you about to turn, but still, bitch. Y'all bout- about to go meet up? Yeah, I know. Yeah. The handicapped police. Yeah. Mm-hmm, you see him over there? We see him. He about to go erase the footage on the cameras. See the hitman? Thank you. Oh, you a black man? Okay. That's a hitman pearl. Thank you, God. They hired this nigga. And he know he been watched. The sheriff already told. Look where they at. Look where the sheriff at, y'all. They at the other hitman house. Look, look. Look, look, look. They hired another hitman just now, just now. You see him? You see the sheriff? Fuck y'all doing steady hiring people. Steady hiring people. You ain't supposed to be at them people's house, you on the job. You on the motherfucking job. In the motherfucking city vehicle, hiring hits, hiring hits. See that truck over there with them rims on it? That's a hitman. And the sheriff is at the hitman house. What the fuck? What the fuck? Hitman. Oh, that's a hit woman, she a hit woman, y'all. She ain't no man, that's a woman. Look at them titties. That's a woman. Yeah, hit fucking woman. Yeah. Hit woman, do some work like you working. That what they told you to do, do some work. Do some work. You going to prison too, stupid bitch. Going to scrape prison. Walk up, let me get your face on this camera. Walk over here. Thank you. You look- Yeah, let me get your face. Yeah, don't turn around now, do the work that they paid you to fake do. The, the sheriff office at- Yeah. Yeah. Look at this shit here. What happened to you doing the fake work, girl? Look at the sheriff at the hitman house- Here. Did you buy the hitman house? Yeah, you did. Mm, mm, mm. Hitman house? Look at this motherfucker here. Really? Really? Got you too. Yeah, I got all y'all. Yeah, we in business this morning. Sheriff's at the hitman house. What, and they still there? What the fuck? What the fuck? What is the sheriffs doing at the hitman house? Parked. Left the police station right here to go to the hitman house. They bought the hitman house too. Wow. Wow, hey, hit girl. Hey, hit woman. You here to take my life, not today, bitch. Thank you, God. Cause sin and believing. Look at the ancestors. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. This is believing, right here. Yeah, girl, I got you, I got you. Yeah, girl, you going to prison today. Yeah, trust and believe you meet soon- It ain't wrapped up yet, get that vehicle through. You know why? Still planning shit, and the more shit you plan- Yeah. At the motherfucking hitman house, the sheriff. Wow. Look a gumba, hey, gumba. Hey, Brian. Yeah, that's your worker right there? Yeah, hitman. Scrape hitman. Scrape hitman. Scrape hitman. Tell me it ain't so, tell me that ain't a hitman. Yes, it is. Yes, it is in the DirecTV van, truck. Here come the plane, the yellow plane, the crop plane that they be using to go get spell work all in Egypt and shit. On the divine being, look at them down there doing that fake ass work, they was all hired. By the sheriff and the store owner, Nicholas. Hit woman. This nigga in this white truck too. I'm happy I got this shit on camera. I'm happy I got it on camera, look at that bitch too. Man. Fucking daddy of hit fucking children. Tired of this shit. Tired of this shit, yeah, bitch. Tired of it. Every fucking day. Every fucking day. Placing a fucking- Office leaving, leaving. Where they going, spirit, they gone now? I take you to truth, look. Bitch. Just left hitman house. The black sheriff woman has workers down here that fucking hit me. And you see all them vehicles, they stalk me all day too. Yeah. Got the hitman house built for them. Noted, documented, thank you, God.
Good morning, grand rising. My life is in danger. By the mob. I didn't even know that these people was the mob. I swear I didn't know. I didn't know. I just didn't know. Spirit said, this is your season for grace, for favor. Somebody named is Gabby. Somebody named is Jada. Somebody is a Capricorn. They didn't get your birthright. They didn't get it. They didn't get it. Divine beings is in reverse. Upright is they stole your birthright. It was in reverse. So they didn't get it. That's why they was trying to set you up. In a trap. I seen that brown spider yesterday. I knew it was a trap. We have real love. The ace of cups sits here. Spirit is saying, you are the ace of cups. By your damn self. You are the real love. You came here, you have the love. And you and people don't even experience it unless you come into their life. They never knew love before you. You come into people life to open up their heart chakra. They can't send these flies to spy on you no more either. We have springers here. You're a real one, number one, spirit said. They was coming at you in the nine or ones, whoever this fire sign Leo is, right? A Virgo as well. They bout to die. Cause they gave it all that they got. Somebody about to lose their home, two tourists. Yeah. Tower in reverse, oh my God. It's about to be horrible. The tower in reverse. It's about to be horrible, man. Jesus Christ, I mean on this planet. They didn't want you to have a home. Two tourists. Cause you're a real one. And you number one. And they felt like they should be number one. Why God don't love them like God love you? This is what they was trying to do. Family, foes, bros, and hoes, this people you came up with, you grew up in the same house with or around the house with. Trying to fucking talk, the tourists got your money. That why they trying to kill your ass. They wanna do everything like you. Yo, they hair, they vehicle, they clothes, they shoes. They wanna be just like you. And if they could've got this done, then they would've. They would've.
Eyes off these motherfuckers. They sure be doing shit fast. Every fucking time. Every fucking time I take my eyes off these motherfuckers, they do something else. God damn. Sit the fuck down.
Seven of swords is in reverse. There's the queers. The five of swords. They couldn't defeat you. And they wouldn't take some money. They offered this queer some money. They didn't take it though. Did they take that money to the wounds? No. Talk to the head, slap your ass. They getting beat down by your ancestors cause you a sweetheart. Trying to put you on ice. Fuck this shit, man. I really don't care like. YouTube don't appreciate uh divine beings. They steal from us. And they steal from us and then they promote the dark people. Swear it on God. That's what YouTube do. This is not the platform for divine beings. But with that being said, God said right in the beginning that it didn't matter. Right? God was gonna make a believer out of everybody. Because how do we know what's going on with you? And we not even, we don't even, we not even know what you? We ain't even heard nothing about what you going through, cause divine beings always with God. We don't hang out in crowds, groups of people. I ain't never did that, even as a child. Never, ever. Uh-uh. Cause see, when you got too many people around you, you can't hear from God. That shit make me nervous when too many people get around me. Away from a child. Cause some shit should be safe. Everybody don't need to be around your mammy fucking child. That bitch really told me go get my baby out the grave. And my baby saved her from having an overdose. She not no baby no more, y'all. She twenty-five. Her name is Ebony Lepri, my first baby. My family killed my baby with black magic. Yeah, they did. They sacrificed my baby. My mom did it. Yeah, that's what they do in my family. They rape the kids. And they beat them into submission. And then they go get more. Not only the family rape you, but then they lovers that they go get be pedophiles too. So you getting double raped and beat. And then they gonna beat on you and burn you with cigarettes because now they lover want you a child. And they gotta fight you because you they child and they lover want they child. What the fuck? What the fuck? This shit's still going on? They protecting they pedophiles. That's why my daughter don't talk to me. Cause she wanna protect her pedophile. And she feel like I'm wrong for exposing it. Well, I don't give a fuck. You may not understand now, but you will understand later. It's not right to fuck your family. And my son, he wanna talk to me. But he's so loyal to his motherfucking sister, cause that's how I raised him. Stick together against anybody, even me. I'm not disappointed, I'm very proud, to be honest. I'm very proud. Cause I know that he not gonna let nothing happen to us. That's what I know. At least that's what I thought. But my children know about this murder for my life, my older ones. Even the baby ones know. Cause they was hidden. We was kidnapped, all of us. All of us. You think my children, why you think they don't want my children out? Because if my children come out, right? Everything gonna be exposed. What my family really did and still doing. This is wrong, spirit say. Now there's no evidence of me being here right now at this library. Yeah, he just erased. And there's no evidence of me being at any of these places. He erased it. And he been doing it for three weeks now. Wow. And he just, they paying a bag of money to do that. And he keep that money with him too. Hey, Brian Gumba. Set a hit for my life. Him and my cousin sending it. Thought that'd be a good way to pay me back. Pay me back for what? Pay me back for what? For leaving. For leaving them. There's no honor among thieves. Spirit can't bless you in the same place that made you sick. Why? Because them sick motherfuckers that made you sick, you just gonna give it back to them. And that's why spirit can't bless you in the same place that made you sick. But times are changing. And spirit is about to do just that. You where you supposed to be. And you ain't going no fucking where. But they are. Oh, my brother Jesus. I pity the fool. They going somewhere, but you ain't. God is about to bless you in the same place that made you sick. Cause you healed now. And these people wanna fight you, but they not fighting you. They're fighting themselves because they unhealed. Because there's no way fallen or not that you think it's okay to sacrifice your own children. Whether you a fallen angel or not, there ain't no motherfucking book that you could read that'll tell you to sacrifice your own fucking children, bitch. But that's what you do. Yeah, that's what you do. That's why the ancestors is whooping y'all motherfucking asses. You weren't raised like that, you dirty cunning bitch. Some of you motherfuckers don't even know what it feel like to walk nowhere. Don't know what it feel like to go without food. Don't know what it feel like to be homeless. Don't know what it feel like to go without. Welcome. It's your turn. Since you wanted the divine beings to go through it right. And you had the money, the resources, the power to do it right. God finna show y'all who got the power. I got the power. And you about to learn that. Namaste. Everything, I'm available. Everything is in the description bar below this video. Thank you guys for being here. I love you so very much, divine beings, and God. Have a surprise for you. Oh yeah, you been doing bad. You ain't about to be. You just had to go through it so God could show you. Who the fuck you could take? And who the fuck you couldn't take? And now you know. Stay up. Look, spirit blowing the trumpet. Look at the sheriff, bitch. Steady hiring people, hitman after hitman after hitman. They done hired so many, fifty-seven, God. Fifty-seven fucking hitmen instead of doing it and counting. They done fucked up everybody's life. And they hiring new ones now because the old ones, they didn't work. Why? Because you already seen it before it even happened. I wish these dumb fallen angels get it together. Yes, they supposed to motherfucking bite your head. But they forgot the other fucking part. The favorite part, that you gonna crush they motherfucking heads. Everybody got a job. And you doing yours. And believe it or not, they doing theirs too. Everybody is in action for the most high God. And they don't even know it. But they about to find out. All things go together for our good. Even the lessons. The trials, the tribulations are for our good. See, when you don't have none, be worried. Be very worried. I don't give a fuck. That rich shit. You already rich in spirit. You don't need all that shit. You don't require all of that. We don't need all of that. To be free. And by God, we are free. Free indeed. Welcome. It has never, ever been a time like this on this planet. It has never been a time like this. You about to see the high rankings fall. They thought that nobody could touch them. They was untouchable. Nobody seen them. They had it all figured out. God don't sleep, fools. You didn't have it all figured out. You missed the common denominator, which was God. God say nice to meet you for the first time. Namaste, man.